Welcome to the Central City, the regular three summer school board meeting. I have the opportunity to open the meeting tonight. What I'd like to do is start with the call of order, then a roll call. And Tara, can I sit with you over down the far end?
Tara here, Director's Student Services.
Patrick Gordon, Principal Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Megan Reed, Assistant Principal Sunapee Elementary School.
Sean Wainian, Principal Sunapee Elementary School.
Colleen Sear, School Board.
Karen McCall, School Board.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Scott Ritzman, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Russ Holden, Superintendent. Please join me before we leave.
To the flag of the United States of America, the two republics, the states, the one nation, under God, in the heavens, in liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Amanda, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Happy to have you here. And I'd like to open the meeting looking for a nomination for Chair.
I'll nominate this man to my right, Ed Anderson.
Do I have a nomination from Scott Ritzman for Ed Anderson or the second?
I'll second it.
Do I have any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, hearing none, all favor of the motion of Ed Anderson for the Chair for twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Or schemes? None? Maybe you are new Chair and it is your turn.
Thank you. Looking for a nomination for our Vice Chair, I would nominate Scott Ritzman.
One second.
Anybody else? Okay. All those for Mr. Scott Ritzman, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Committee assignments is the next item on the agenda to go over.
Can you give your little history on that, if you'd like?
Yes, please.
So in your packet, we just listed the standing committees that the school board has. You'll see the capital improvement, the C I P, finance, negotiations and policy. Little outline of those and then behind that you'll see the members or committees you currently sit on or stand on. And then looking for folks to discuss if they'd like to stay on those committees, switch to a new committee and give a mayor an opportunity to be in a couple committees as well. So.
You had a chance, Amanda, to see the committees that we have.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, how many do you like to have on each committee?
You people usually take all five.
Great, perfect.
Meaning that we've all had an opportunity to serve on a lot of these, is there anything that jinxed to your mind that you might be interested in?
I thought about policy, but it's, I don't know if you have a need in another space. It looks like capital improvement negotiations has released a lot of people, is that purposeful? Or do we need three, do we need another group?
Negotiations is primarily when we deal with this, the teachers' union and deliver contracts and stuff like that.
Okay.
I think something would all like come up with that if there was some sort of amendment to the existing agreement, right? Otherwise, you know, there's, that's every, every three years for that.
And we just had ours, it was last year, so it'll be two years before we do that again. Is there anybody, well, looking at the capital improvement with the school almost being done or not quite done yet, but the fields and stuff, would Tara, any like to stay on that and continue or that whole project been a lot, or looking to maybe step down?
I'd like to stay on, I think that we have a lot of work left to do. Long ways to go.
Yeah, I mean, there's so much knowledge with both, both of you right now, I think it would be great to stay on, but if somebody else wanted to jump on, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to help.
So why don't we just leave the both on capital improvement and Amanda, Scott, if you have an interest, that's great, if not, that's kind of what to do, but we can just leave the both of them on.
No, I think, you know, the past couple of years, you know, Jesse hasn't really been on anything anymore because he's been the Chair, so I see your name on his list, so I suspect, you know, that'll be, your main focus will be Chair.
Right.
So.
So just pretty clear, we've, we took Jesse's name off, so all you folks said on finance, Jesse also was a backup to negotiations. Here the capital improvement, but we took him off this, for the, for the, so you're all by default for, in the finance.
Perfect, so we'll leave capital improvement the same. And finance, we could put me, I guess, the same as Jesse on the back and then Amanda, would you like to be on that? Negotiations, I'm happy to stay on. Enjoyed it over those years, but if somebody else would like to, you know, I'd kind of add it together.
I think your background, in your previous profession, or I guess still your current profession, but that, that has been very helpful, in my opinion, on that committee.
All right. And then we move on to policy, which Scott has done ninety-nine percent of the work with that, but Amanda, I definitely think Scott would like to have somebody join in with that.
Certainly with an educational background, background education, that would be a great in a place of learning and so.
Sure, how do you know?
We meet, you know, probably three times a year. It's not a big, it's not a big lift.
Okay.
But a good place to get familiar with a lot of things, I think.
Yeah, good.
All right, so Russ, do you have all those?
You're good.
All right, you're good on that. Going to be looking for a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes. Somebody wants to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March eighth, twenty twenty-three, school board meeting.
Second?
One second.
All right, any discussion or concerns? All right, I'd ask for a motion to approve. Got it, sorry, I'm going to learn this. And then make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, C I P committee. That's what I was asking for, a vote. I don't get this, can we have a vote on the minutes of March eighth, twenty twenty-three, school board meeting minutes?
Aye.
Okay, now we're asking for a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, C I P committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those next.
In a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, we will vote on the minutes of March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. The agenda review.
Good. Let's see if folks have some.
Well, I don't. Public forum in accordance with policy D E D page, does anybody from the public category look up the box? Hearing, hearing.
I was saying, it's really hard to hear, you can speak up a little bit, so.
Okay, can you hear me okay? All right.
If you're trying to watch it afterwards, it's really hard to hear.
Thank you. If no other comment, we will move on. School updates, the S C E S.
Well, we are starting to get ready for the end of the year and a more typical end of the year, given our last couple of years, teachers are planning field trips. We have one on the agenda this evening where our fifth graders are going to go to the STEM Day at Fenway and then be able to take in a Red Sox game against the Twins at one o'clock. We, overall, the staff appreciates all the work you did around the budget and getting that passed. Everyone really appreciates the support of the board and the support of our community. It's all around, it's always great every year to have your budget passed and your community support you, so that was a nice pick-me-up in a long winter. We're, we were working with a group of four teachers to update our family handbook. It was written by two previous principals. And it read like that, so we went through it and made sure it had a singular voice through the whole thing and updated some of the language around policies that have changed at the board level and at the state level to make sure it reflects the common times around. Overall, we are, just trying to make sure. Our students are collaborating between grades, we have a number of really great projects that have gone on involving our fourth and, fourth graders and kindergarteners collaborating, they were collaborating around trout. The New Hampshire Game and Wildlife Division provides trout to school and they were doing observations and working together. And it was really quite adorable to see some of our fourth graders really come down from their tough guy stance, they're a very boy-heavy group, and just be really gentle with these kindergarteners. Our kindergarteners and our first graders visited the Sunapee seniors in the month of March, which was a tradition that we were able to bring back. And both the students and the seniors really appreciated the visit. We brought handmade stationery and they gave our students some cookies to sugar them up before we went back up to the end of day. Our third graders have been learning about maple sugaring on our own property, I think they put in seventeen taps and they got about forty to fifty gallons worth of sugar.
Two hundred plus. Two hundred plus of sap.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, that's right, sorry, two hundred gallons of sap, which is going to translate to about four to five gallons of, thank you. So they are very excited, an alumni is actually going to boil it down, or I guess, what's the technical term? Boil it down for syrup, for maple syrup and I promised pancakes to the class when the, when the maple syrup's available and ready to be eaten. And I think that's really it right now.
Thank you. Updates from your high school?
Well, we just ended our third quarter, so we're in the stretch run, so four parents will go out this week, whether kids like it or not, but we may all know. We had, March is busy with a lot of things, so we have the play that had a good ending with Renee Brandon, so she's out for three years and she's going to step away now. Really appreciate the time that Renee done doing the fall and the spring play each year, so she really has done, done a lot of work. Other baseball and softball teams went to Cape Cod and got a little bit of softball in between the rain on Saturday, so again, it shows Sunday and then moving on Friday. Two out of three isn't too bad this time of year, you know, there. The scholar athletes are recognized and conquered, so that's something that has traditionally been done, but hasn't been done in a couple of years now, but they were able to make their way back to Capital Center for the Arts and recognize a number of our students. Senior project is going to be equal twenty, so that is coming up and of course, the scholarships can get a dinner, it is before that. So, a lot going on, it'll be a busy fourth quarter, Mr. Cooney and the guidance department sent out the super memo yesterday and it's, it looks like there's pretty much something going on most every day for the rest of the way. But good things going on and I think, did I mention students took their, juniors took their SATs a few last weeks?
How long does it typically take for results for that to come back, the SATs?
Uh, we usually get them towards the end of the school year.
I see that student representatives not here, is that my responsibility, no, or any of those?
No, I won't be happy to take that.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent update.
Thank you, in touch with, I didn't mean to correct you, you just, so one of the greatest things is seeing fourth graders carry five gallon buckets full of water or sap down the hill and except, I got to see it on three different occasions, and they would come down the bottom, they're like, wow, you got enough of that, like, well, we still have the bucket on there now. But you still do a good job, so yeah, they collected a two gallon, but it was really impressive to see and good for showing and letting the kids experience that. So things have been busy, we are in the hiring process, Sean, Minister of Education, Mark Science, hopefully that he's been out. Second option right now for adjustment council. You know, unfortunately, there was another school shooting in our country, a horrible tragedy. And just so folks have a better understanding, we every year develop an emergency operation plan that is submitted to the Department of Homeland Security in New Hampshire and we work with local police, fire, emergency management folks here in town. Our teachers practice that plan throughout the year. This year, based upon legislation last year, one of our drills needs to be an active intruder drill. And so we have Homeland Security scheduled to come in on May seventeenth, I believe, in the afternoon for about three hours and we are doing a tabletop drill with the entire district on what an active intruder looks like in our school. It's something that, you know, as a superintendent, I take very seriously, back in seventeen, we were recognized as a school of excellence in the state for our emergency management preparedness. Great, the plaque on the wall, but it means nothing because you have to continue to be prepared and things change day after day, year after year. I know the C I P committee is looking really, really diligently at the safety of our facilities. We've, we've discussed the parking lot playground issue at the elementary school, we're now discussing further and looking at getting as built, made, we had some money approved at the last meeting, for the best of you, in making a secure entrance at the elementary school. And you may have heard me talk about the safe grants that we receive, which allows us, the summertime, to put film on the outside of all the windows here on the first floor, along with ballista glass in the front and, excuse me, and reflective, reflective footage on all the first floor windows at the elementary school as well. So that allows us to see out, but people can't see in. So we continue to practice, continue to look for opportunities to hone in our skills, look, work closely with the folks who need to work closely with, both locally and in the state. But it's just a horrible thing that we are now living in a day where school shootings happen, probably much more frequently than any of us would like them to happen, but we do take it seriously and, you know, I've always said as a, a belly principal, my job is to ensure that your kid comes home to you with the same two arms, two legs, two eyes, two ears, you know, nose and a mouth, but a little bit smarter. And, and, you know, I, I have been able to do that, but it's just a very strange place that we live in in strange times, but I want folks to know that we take that responsibility seriously, it will be practiced, we do train and we do try to be prepared. I think outside of that, again, we're going to talk about some C I P stuff.
Great. Moving on to school board topics, I would just like to point out that I was able to attend this weekend, the trip to the Cape and to watch the girls play softball and just see how they all work together to have the opportunity to get on a field, if you look at ours, you know, we cannot, so just to get them out and out of the gym and there, I think was a really fun time and I was just explaining to Russ that I really find benefits in doing these type of small trips with different types of groups and things for the kids to do and I enjoyed my time down there. Anybody else has any other topics they'd like to bring up?
No, just a question for Russ, how's the, how's the job market looking like this year, has it improved at all or is it still slow?
I'd like to say it's improved, so yes, there's some good news, right? So for our science candidate, we had, I think, ten positions, we had close to ten candidates. We could be, I think, five, Sean?
We figured five and I would say it was a very good applicant.
Yep. Not so much right now on our other positions. Custodian, we, we are okay on at this point, we did get an additional food service worker that we were looking for, our educators are still hard to come by, special ed directors are really hard to come by, adjustment counselors have to come by.
Do you find that the housing market is affecting any of that for people wanting to live close to this area or they have to travel further, how do we compete with?
You know, it's interesting because in the science, I can speak to the science, I think we have two people, about three from out of state. We're going to travel, I'm finding the other applicants specifically for the adjustment, they're more southwest located, so I'm not getting somebody from Nashville coming to look up here. Tara let me know that there are five actual openings in the state for special ed directors and they, six?
It's actually, it's more than that, there were five that just simply walked away.
Walked away, I'm sorry, but they're scattered all over the state and so there's one in Bogue, there's one in the southern part of the state, there's one a little bit farther up, there's one up north, so I do think read people will regionalize. You know, what's too much, my administrative assistants traveling about forty-five minutes, I, I was traveling an hour, important time, we have an art teacher that travels over an hour, so I think it depends on what, what people are looking for, if there's an opportunity for them, that they feel they would like to pursue. Does the market itself, I don't know if I have an answer for that.
As we're looking for teachers, is there a timeline where if we're not offering or finding qualified candidates, what is yours, how long do you let that go as we're trying to hire, if we're not running into a situation where a position has remained open for months just because we're not competitive or travel?
I think we're competitive, right, we've done that to the market value based upon the recommendation of the board last year, so we feel like we're competitive in that regard. We've been luckily able to fill all our critical positions and I am not saying that parent professionals aren't critical, they turn over a little more frequently or that opportunity pops up more frequently, so we've been able to help, double-stacking here with our teachers in place, our guidance counselors, our directors, our administrators. We'll see what happens this year, we keep things open until they fill. So I, I mean, we're not going to close until we get, oh, we develop a plan, so we're really good at developing plans on how to take people within and see what their potential is and move them around to try to fill some vacancies if that, if need be.
Thank you. Action items, I'm looking for a motion to approve the proposed certified teacher twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed certified teachers for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second Tara's motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And looking for a motion to propose the certified administrators twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the proposed certified administrators twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed graduation date, do we want to say that out loud? And the date is?
June ninth.
June ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed graduation date of June ninth.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed student parent handbooks.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbooks as they've been provided to us.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
I'll give you, I guess, Sir Patrick did a nice job going through the handbook, cleaning it up, making it a little more condensed, making sure that our policies and things are up to date. I think it had just fallen a little bit behind because of COVID, I know Sean went through and made a couple of small edits, again, there in your packet, no major edits there, but some small edits, so they both did a great job and I appreciate the work on that, Sean.
Just in the board's knowledge, you go through the athletic handbook and the student handbook with high school principal's advisory and the middle school principal's advisory and sharing with the faculty.
It's a lot of pages.
They, a lot of, it's fair, they, they're, we don't go through it page by page, but we certainly, you know, is there anything you'd like to change, is there anything you'd like to move around, so we have that discussion.
Something, I just, an observation, I hadn't noticed this before, maybe it's been this way, but I think it's neat that there's links throughout the handbooks to the policies that apply to the various sections, which I hadn't noticed before, I guess, but I think that's great because as, you know, folks are reading through this in August, getting ready for the new school season, if there is something that, you know, they're not familiar with, they can just click on that, it makes it real easy to, you know, jump to that policy and, you know, see what it's all about.
That was a new thing this year.
Was that a new thing?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I, I like that.
And we tried picking the top five policies we've had to use this year for the end of the handbook, but it ended up being the top seven, couldn't cut it down too long.
Good. Well, that's great, you know, policies can be mundane, but then when you need them, you know, they need to be there, they needed Murox, so I think that's a great change.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jump right along to a motion to approve the proposed athletic handbook.
Make a motion to approve the proposed athletic handbook.
I'll second it.
Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And looking for a motion to approve the proposed program of studies.
Make a motion to approve the proposed program of studies.
Second?
Second.
Anything on this?
I just had a quick question, do we, because I have two kids looking at this right now very actively, does it change every year? As far as what's offered?
Minimally.
Okay.
Minimally, so I'll give you an example, and it's not in the program of studies right now, so for instance, we are going to add it in English about the next year, and so we've got a teacher working on that right now, so the teacher has some options. So it's not a program of studies yet, but we will have some switches depending on which alternatives.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed tuition rate twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed tuition rate twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
I'll second it.
Russ, real quick, maybe would you want to just give us a rundown of this, I know this is a hot topic with a lot of people in town.
Yes, so, again, we don't have tuition agreements, we're not a, a anchor school right now, folks look it up, can, can, based upon schools that have choice in our region, those towns allow those students a set amount of money and then with that set amount of money, they're welcome to apply or attend other local, uh, public private schools within this region or within the state. And so typically, our, our kids are kind of from Doshen, Gruen, Lampster and Unity. We reached out to those folks and asked where their tuition rate will be for next year. Based upon that, we felt that at sixteen, keeps everybody in the game where it's not coming out of the parent pockets, we don't want to make it so we're not available to folks in those communities. And so leaving that at sixteen for K, uh, nine through twelve and fifteen thousand for K through eight. We have had, been reached out to by the superintendent from Freudin, and he would like to have a conversation with us while extending our relationship with Freudin specifically. And sort of I'm going to ask to me the other day, I was doing some research online and I found an article, that was in the Eagle Times and it talks about us being the anchor school and has a wrong tuition rate, but obviously Freudin's very interested in potentially talking to us about what that anchor school possibility looks like. What that really would mean is that if students from Freudin that have choice, and they have choice, if we adapt to the fifth, fourth grade, they can again, go to any school in the state of New Hampshire, any public school, private school in the state of New Hampshire, but if they decided they didn't want to apply to another school, they would just automatically come to us and sign. So just so we have a better understanding of what that means, right now Freudin in fourth grade has seven kids. So to be an anchor school, Freudin isn't taking, picking up a hundred kids, it's potentially picking up maybe four kids, three kids, two kids, but they all have those other options. We have a number of kids from Freudin already, obviously they're not all in fifth grade, they're spread across, um, grades, grades five through twelve. Three, right, three, or thirteen kids from Freudin right now. And then again, looking at Freudin's numbers, and this is a conversation that, again, the board chair from Freudin asked to have with our board chair and the two superintendents, they have five kids in first grade, five kids in second grade, four kids in third grade, seven kids in fourth grade. And so it might be something that as we, as a school district, want to ensure that we can offer programs to our kids. Looking, reaching out potentially to some of these other, um, choice schools and seeing if they have an interest in being, in, in being, having us as their anchor school. And that would, I think, allow us to really show some good faith to our community that we're looking to continue to have kids come to us. But also more importantly, I think for us, allow our programs for our kids to be stabilized potentially. Because we know we have a pool of kids coming in. And we may get a couple of kids, you know, sometimes people take the path of least resistance. Doesn't mean that they're not great families and great kids, but it's just easier to go where I'm told to go instead of going through a process of apply. Again, I think there are kids that potentially, if you want to play football, you're not going to come to Sonopie, you're going to go to Newport or Claymont. If you want to play hockey, you gotta go to Claymont. But if you're interested in some of the programs here in Sonopie, there's, there's now maybe an easier path to get here to Sonopie. I think it's a good opportunity for us to have an initial conversation and potentially see where that goes. But I could see that says a win-win win all the way around.
Sure. With the board discussing the rates, kind of my thought process behind that from one of my prior jobs. I would take other communities in and try to have them come in for dispatch. And within my dispatch center that the town wanted, they wanted a dispatch center with a set number. So what my philosophy behind that was through calls, or in this case would be students, is I would rather have a fair amount of money than overprice towns to encourage them to come and work. Because I've heard in prior meetings where people feel that our cost per student is twenty-eight thousand, let's say. And they're wondering why we're not charging the twenty-eight thousand. From my prior experience, like I said, to have those kids come in and offset that budget for a school district that the community wants, I think is a one-win across the situation. So I appreciate us keeping our tuition rate at a level that would allow those students to come in and maybe have some students that couldn't, like you say, because the parents can't afford that other three, five, ten thousand, uh, to keep those kids coming in. You move that rate up, you gain one student that rate, but you lose four, we're losing as a district. So it's kind of my thoughts on that. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Well, and I think, Russ, maybe you can kind of talk to, we've talked about it before, but our current class size, with additional numbers, we're not talking about adding additional staff and cost. It really is a pure offset. So it's beneficial to us.
Not, most of the tipping for it, right? So if you, if you looked at all those classes and I, actually, we went and pulled out the data of the kids in those schools. You know, if we were to have all the students right now come to us in sixth grade from those four communities, it would be, you're up for, maybe thirty kids. So thirty kids going into potentially one grade level, right? But then you, you, so Goshen, twenty-eight kids, Lampster, a hundred and fourteen kids, and then, um, Cook. Unity, I'm sorry, Unity at a hundred kids. Unity's spread out between K, K, uh, Lampster is K eight and Croydon is K four. So if you spread those kids out, again, you're talking, you know, maybe a hundred and twenty kids. We could easily absorb those kids, not in one grade level, but across
Great.
Eight grade levels. And again, I don't think all those hundred kids, hundred, twenty kids are coming. I guess. We do not have the tipping though.
Once the students apply, is it, they reapply every year or they're just, once they're in the system, they're in the system?
Great question, Amanda. So right now, the way the process is set up, is they apply, they have to reapply. They have to, they have to confirm they want to come back and then we have the option of telling them yes or no. We ask them to fill out paperwork to, this we can process that through the business department regarding the finance. The principal has an opportunity to meet with that student and or family. They hit, he has a committee that, they have a committee that they work with as well. To my knowledge, and Sean, you can correct me and don't correct me on this year, but up until this year, we've never, I think, told, had a student NASA to meet.
Uh, it's been a while, but we, but we have, and we have said no to students as well. We have that option. It's rare, you know, we, you know, mostly, the kids want, for the most part, the kids will probably, they will want to come to us with a visit, with a motivation there. But, you know, we do, we do review them each year. And it is typical that we, that they will go from one year to the next. But we have had circumstances, it's been a while, but we have had circumstances where we haven't been able to do that.
I don't think we can have more inside than that.
I'm sorry.
The difference without Amanda though, if we became an anchor school, then they are, they are our student.
They couldn't say, I went to Sonopie a year, I didn't like it, I want to
Well, they could do that, but we couldn't say we didn't like that.
Right, right, but the student could, yeah. I was just thinking in terms of, you know, turnover and, you know, acclimating new students is a process for your staff. And if you had a big influx, you would just want to, you wouldn't want it to, to constantly change by the, by a big number every year.
The, the, the some good part about that, if students are, we're going to anchor school over other communities and they're coming in at ninth grade. Ninth grade is sort of that transition year as well. The kids are coming up in the middle school, but moving along with them.
Hearing no further comment, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed breakfast lunch prices twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed breakfast and lunch prices for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second it.
Russ, your mind going over that with us?
Sure. It's information in your packet. Every year, Kelly works with Rob and they have a sort of tool that's online through the, through the department of education, in which we can set a price. Our food service, food service program is supposed to be a sort of a break even program. That's really difficult to do in any school, really difficult to do here. Rob's done a great job with it. We supplement his budget a little bit by helping with his salary, but the rest of it is paid for by the other salaries, but a part-time salary is paid for out of the program itself. So we look to see where we can gain a little bit. Three dollars in, three dollars and thirty cents for a lunch, pretty good deal. You can't get that at McDonald's, you can't get that anywhere else, so. And it, and it meets nutritional standards, it's a good lunch. He does sell some alacard things as well. He serves anywhere between probably eighty and a hundred students up here, maybe a hundred and twenty or a fifty today, and somewhere between sixty and eighty students at the elementary school, I guess.
Do you mind, just so the public at home can just hear the increase, because it's not a lot of money at all?
So currently, our student breakfast is two dollars, it's going to two dollars and twenty-five cents. Our student lunch is at three dollars and fifteen cents, it's going, increasing to two dollars and thirty cents. Staff will go from two twenty-five for breakfast to two thirty-five. Staff lunch will go from three fifty to three sixty. And milk will go from fifty cents to sixty cents.
Which doesn't even count what I'm seeing at the supermarkets here feeding the family. Is there any concern that this is going to be any issues for any students or families? Because it's not a great increase, but what do we do in case there's children that cannot?
Sure, so the, the option for free increased lunches, there is an application process, both administrators, Tara and myself, we can, could identify a child and put them on an emergency situation and just have them get free increased lunches in case, if I find any information that we know that may allow them to sort of fall under that umbrella without even doing the application.
Perfect.
So, and, and Rob's really good with understanding and, you know, given who we are and our size. We're pretty aware of when there's a need and making sure to take care of the need.
Hearing nothing else, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Some opposed. Uh, we're going to look for a motion to approve a grant from New Hampshire Department of Energy.
Make a motion to approve the grant from New Hampshire Department of Energy.
Be happy to.
Thank you, Russ.
Uh, so back in December, um, Mike Davy from E I contacted me and he said, listen, I know we're not done with the, the plant down there. And I know you folks have issues with your HVAC, specifically your boilers being very outdated. And talked about wanting to potentially look to do something else. And we had talked about potentially doing a biomass here, that was having a C I P conversation at some point in time. He said, the grants opened up again, would you like me to apply? So, well, let's, let's think about that, what happens? So it's a two, if we get approved, it's a two-year grant, um, you still have to pass it within your community. But you can, you know, at least the money's there if you do pass it. I said, great, so we wrote it up, put it in, and lo and behold, we got approved for four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the, the biomass plant costs is about one point one, getting about four hundred thousand of that. Next year, we'll have to spend some time, uh, if the board decides to accept this grant and wants to move forward in the budget process with the C I P committee, to think about, is this going into a warrant, how are we going to do this? Something that we're, so that we put a warrant article on the ballot in March that asks for capital improvement money to fund it started for looking at HVAC improvements, HVAC improvements to this builder. And we put that warrant article, twenty-five thousand dollars, and we did that intentionally of voter approval, meaning we were going to raise and appropriate that, we weren't taking it out of fund balance. Because we wanted to see if the community had a flavor for really us investing and looking at this project. And so that, that warrant out of the past, we now have that twenty-five thousand, along with this four hundred thousand, sort of sets us in the right direction. I would suggest that you approve the grant, prove to accept the grant. We then go through the process next year. One, we'll have some data regarding the biomass plant that we have, because that will be up and running very shortly. We'll hear more about that. We'll have some data on that, we'll be able to look at some energy savings. If December, March comes around and we decide we don't want to go for this, we'll just tell them we don't want the grant, you know, how to file, the money goes back. Uh, and it's potentially redistributed to somewhere else. But if we decide to do it, we now have the money, if we pass a warrant or a budget, whatever we decide to do with that, we now have this money to put towards that project. It certainly is a, better than a stick in the eye, as they say, in paying one point one and cutting that potential cost down to six hundred thousand dollars.
By the sounds of it, you should have some good time operating the other one, um, when we get towards the end of next year to have some data.
So we have some great propane data that we hope to share with you come May. Uh, but we're hoping that when we start up next year and even towards the end of this year, if it stays cold, um, within the next month or so, we'll be able to at least start showing the efficiency of the biomass plant.
Great data in that grant to show like, you know, our annual savings estimate, things like that. And we actually got, what, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more in this grant than the prior one, correct? So I mean, they stepped it up and gave us some more money. We know we need new boilers, um, we really want to see some data, obviously, from the boil down to the elementary school. Plus, this is a, this is too, too good to pass up, you know, so.
And again, there's no cost to us if we decide not to do it, so.
No, no, no.
It's a no brainer in my book. All those, uh, in favor to approve the grant? Some boys saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Information items, uh, the baseball, softball, uh, Cape Cod trip, I know that you spoke about that, you spoke on that. Um, we spoke about the family STEM field trip. The voting outcomes, I'd be happy to read those. I think Justin only put those on the record, correct Russ?
Uh, I think we have, in the past as well. I think they're just, so more if you wanted to discuss anything that was there.
Any discussion on those items?
I just think it's really great that twenty-seven percent showed up on the day that we had with that weather.
Yes.
I was really wondering, you know, if ten percent was going to show up at one point, but really appreciate the support of everybody coming to the polls that day and making our way there, you know, have their voice heard.
I agree with that. And I would just say, welcome again, Amanda, and thank you, Laura, for, for running. It's appreciated to have people out there wanting to be on the board. I have nothing further with those.
No, I think the only other thing I'd say is, is I think, you know, this year we took a little bit of a different approach with this, of wanting to look at ways to put money away a little more incrementally. Sort of taking the town's approach to doing things and putting, you know, having those capital reserves established and putting a little bit away, so it's not such a big ask. So I was really pleased to see that we got favorable results across the board. So I think that'll be an approach that we'll want to stick to going forward, so that as and when we're ready to take on whatever the next project is that requires, you know, going to vote, then we've, we've got something established in place already.
Interestingly enough, on Article Four, which is talking about upgrading the installation system, it was well over, you know, fifty percent more saying that it's something to approve, which is kind of in line of where we're going now with the community support. The S C E S project update?
Well, we are still waiting unfortunately on the roof for a silo. Materials have been shipped, we've been told that it's going to be in production, I believe it's next week, Russ? Or is it this week in production?
Hold on, Russ. Was, the metal was getting to the shop tomorrow, down in Kentucky, Thursday or Friday. Manufactured, middle by the, and down by the middle next week shipped up here, and supposed to be in Keene by the end of next week.
So just a little bit of background on that, we've been, you know, really frustrated with the, with the silo. And unfortunately, the subcontractor's hands have been tied, they've already paid for the silo. But they, our general contractor, construction management group, did agree that if we don't get it, they were going to build a custom one. Because we have to get this thing completed. So we're very hopeful that by the end of the April break, hopefully, we'll see this, you know, the roof for the silo now be completed. The one thing that we probably won't see, that we don't see in the foreseeable future, is the new audio fire panel. Um, that's just a piece of equipment that we just can't seem to get our hands on. Doesn't mean that our fire alarm system isn't working, it's all been approved by the chief and everything's up and working. But it's just the one new modern piece of equipment that ties everything together and ties us to the shirt and ties us to the modular. So now we have one, you know, fire system for the whole complex. I think C I P is going to have a pretty, pretty busy summer because we, we, it looks like we're going to try to move forward with our new parking lot switch up the elementary school to make that a safer environment. We'd love to have the vestibule done this summer, we did, Russ did some exploratory excavation. We found out we had cross walls under the existing enclosed vestibule, uh, which makes that project a lot more, you know, easy to handle in the summer. To just be able to close it in and hopefully, especially with the safe money is available, you know, use, use that towards the ballistic glass and things there also. Unfortunately, without, with the parking lot switch, we probably aren't going to switch a lot of structures around yet because we don't have the funds to do that. But we do have a, something in place to keep the structures where they need to be, move the preschool structures, um, still have some hard escapes for them to play, you know, kickball on, things like that. So, and then, you know, we just keep working on a master grave help with, you know, trying to figure out a strategic plan for the roof here, things like that. So we, we've got a lot of things that we got to look at, uh, in the next few months, just so that we can keep ahead of it.
I think we're, we're looking at, um, cost for window replacements too, which is another big item that will help with energy efficiency. And then two, we've got the film, right, to put on, and ideally you want to have new windows to put those on. So we're looking at that too.
So ideally, it would be the, the lower level windows, you know, so that that's where that reflective film would go from the ramp. You know, it'd be too bad that we, if we couldn't do the windows, you know, to put the reflective film on the windows.
Yep.
That's what's going on.
Excellent, thank you. Moving up to manifest, would somebody like to make? Oh, resignation.
I wish you skipped that one.
Yeah, I was trying to.
I skipped that one.
Information items, the resignation of our director of student services. Do we still continue to read these, Russ, or?
Uh, you're certainly right.
All right. Um, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, Dear Superintendent Holden and the Sonopie School Board. After much consideration, it is with a heavy heart that I am writing to inform you of my resignation from my position as Director of Student Services, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I have decided that it is time for me to move on to the next chapter of my career. It has been an honor and privilege to have served as Sonopie School District's Director of Student Services for the past fifteen years and as out of district coordinator before that. During my tenure, I have had the pleasure of working with an outstanding team of professionals dedicated to providing high-quality instruction, support and services to students. Seeing the growth and success of our students has been one of the most rewarding aspects of my career. My years at Sonopie have been a significant part of my professional journey and I will always treasure them. Please let me know if there is anything I can do to make this transition process smoother for my replacement. I am willing to assist in any way I can. This was not an easy decision to make and I am grateful.
to make, and I am grateful for the opportunity to have been part of the Sunapee School District. I wish the district, its staff, students, families, and community all the best, sincerely, Tara Gere. Just would like to reach out now and say thank you for the amazing fifteen years, um, that you've put forward to, uh, the Sunapee School District in my short time being on the board. Um, I just can't imagine the amount of work, uh, heart, effort that you put in, and, and quite honestly, I don't know if, uh, how well you did your job, it can, it can be replaced. Personally, I'd like to say thank you for that time.
All right, we're looking for a, a motion to approve the manifest. Who wants to step up to my own role?
Does that mean you don't get to be the manifest guy anymore?
I can do it.
No, I'm just kidding.
I'll do the A P manifest. I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one manifest for eighty-one thousand dollars and seventy-two cents, and the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two manifest for sixty thousand, four hundred dollars and forty-eight cents.
All those in favor?
I'll second it.
Sorry, second.
It's okay. You knew what that says.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're looking for a motion to approve the payroll manifests.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll manifests, twenty twenty-three dash eighteen for four hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, three hundred, or two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
All those in favor? Should never be saying aye.
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 So now that you all read them, I just didn't do it because I have the student floor, I liked it. You could just say, as presented.
We can.
Because they're on the agenda, which is online, which is available.
Okay.
You could say, manifest as presented.
As presented.
A P as presented. If you'd like to say it at the time, or we can just, let you go through numbers.
No problems.
As presented.
Agenda items for next meeting.
So, as we bid Tara goodbye, very well, thank you. Uh, she actually, we just received the report from the Department of Education, and she's going to review that entire report, all those little indicator things that we've talked about from time to time, and our standing and our determination, um, and it just, again, it must be vulnerable, it's for the work that our team does, we got a special, but I think it's a great piece of information for us to look at and really have a better understanding of the complexities of special letter that's required. Well, obviously, a C I P update, and we will have our strategic plan, action steps, ready for the board, uh, to take a look at and to approve so we can move forward.
Do we, do we have, um, test score updates? Don't those usually come?
Typically, no, Denver.
Oh, it's fall.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah. I was thinking like the other day myself.
Yeah.
Uh, we have no request to go into non-public as of this time. I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.